Good evening, this is a select board meeting for Thursday, March 19th, 2020 at 6:00 PM at Southwick Town Hall and we have two members of the board in attendance here along with the Chief Administrative Officer and the DPW Director and we have remote participation by select board member Moglen.
Good evening. Pursuant to the Governor, Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southwick Select Board is being conducted both at Town Hall and via remote participation by some members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided by the order. Despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access and will post a record of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. All right, this is a select board meeting of Thursday, March 19th, 2020. We've already stated who is in attendance. The first thing on the agenda is open the session and our first discussion is the COVID-19 discussion and actions. Mr. Steinhardt, would you like to bring us up to date of what we've done so far?
Well, we have obviously sent out updates to our different municipal departments and boards as well as the news outlets and posting on channel, our webpage on our status of each one of our buildings. So that's been done and obviously that includes the opportunity for different boards and committees going forward in the future to use our telephone system for a dial-in calls. So that information Doug had worked on with Jim Middleton and looked at how our current telephone voice-over internet protocol, phone system could support that. So that information is being rolled out to different boards and committees to see if they're going to need that in the future. But in the meantime, most boards have canceled their meetings for the next couple of weeks. So none of that is a pressing issue besides the meetings of the Select Board as the Chief Executive Officer of the Town and the Board of Health who is having their own separate remote meeting this evening. And both of those agendas were appropriately posted through the Town Clerk's Office to comply with the open meeting law standards and the amendments. And we were supplied this advice through Town Council who has information from their different Town Council peers. So that issue's been done. I sat through a conference call today with the Mass Department of Public Health and MEMA and I believe there were other town officials who may have been on it during the conference call which elapsed over an hour. They talked about the rollout of the SBA loan information would be coming up for eligible businesses to apply. So when I got that email, I sent it to board members and I sent it to Mike McMahon, our Economic Development Commissioner. The other issues that they want us to do is to track all COVID-19-related costs because there will be later evaluations for reimbursements. When I'm done with this list, you're going to get toward another action. The state will be seeking additional declarations of emergency to access other federal aid programs. They also encourage people to use the COVID-211 line as opposed to 911 for those types of issues. There are going to be additional Board of Health requirements for submission of data and reporting to the state in terms of EMS-related issues. They even talked about relaxing certain standards where you could have an ambulance be staffed by one EMT or a paramedic only with a driver who would be up front who would just need to be a first responder certified. So that issue's going on. They also talked about the need for certifications of EMTs and other renewals that are coming up for expiration now that those would be extended through June 30th. They talked about the need to acquire more personal protective equipment items, you know, like the mask type stuff. So what's been happening there is the pub, the Health Director has been serving as the point person to collect data from the police and fire and EMS on the types of equipment they need and supplies and stock like the PPEs, the masks and other types of equipment. So she is acting as the point person putting that list together to get it to the appropriate person at the state. The other thing that's been discussion going forward in the future because there, you know, there are issues with having the medical examiner respond out to communities because of the geographical issues and the waits. So there may also be discussion going forward on the establishment of temporary borgs. They want to make sure that there's going to be faster testing for frontline public safety responders. Right now, if you have an individual on the frontline as public safety and somebody said, you might have it, then they're going to make them go and self-quarantine as opposed to if they just had access to the test for first responders, they could have the answer within two or three days as opposed to waiting for 14 to see if the person has anything. So that's something that the, that different public safety people were weighing in on today, trying to get the state to somehow have some arrangement or setup so that they could get these tests to communities so that their frontline people could be tested and that they'd be able to return to service faster because you're going to only afford to have so many people out. You're only so many people deep.
Only so big, yeah.
Not just our fire, but our police and that's been a concern by the fire chief. So that was part of hit their protocols on Facebook. Okay, and then there's going to be again, the need to just track costs. So MEMA did send out an email where they were designating people and our people for collecting information is going to be Melinda in the accounting department and then Robin because she's done it with the snowstorm issues before for me or with Randy and then it will be also Charlie as our EMD person.
Okay.
And that's going to be important because they just don't know how aid will come, the form it will come in because, you know, when you're dealing with snow or emergency disasters, it's like, okay, this is your piece of equipment, that's your hourly rate with the operator. And then here's the sand or salt you bought. Okay, let us know how many tons you used and then we'll deduct it from the amount that you had originally bought when you stocked up.
Right, right.
So they're going to have to come up with a whole other methodology on how these types of costs could be cost recovered. But in the meantime, I've told anybody I've spoken to in accounting has to, anything you think is a COVID-19-related cost, you make a note whether it's on a bill, a service, a time card for extra services like janitors coming into buildings and doing, you know, more frequent cleanings and de-cleanes, all of those other types of issues. So and who knows the delay of services that we might get into if we're going to get into, you know, elections and things of that nature. So we're going to be really looking at any of these types of costs that we incur.
Does the transfer station fall under any of that gear? The guys taking?
Oh, it absolutely could. I mean, it could. They're practicing their social distancing etiquette down there, but you know, it doesn't mean that we couldn't have extras to supply, but frankly, they don't even have enough to give to public safety right now.
No, no, I understood.
And they found out that half, a percentage of their stockpile were expired.
Yeah.
The federal stockpile were expired.
Right.
Certain percentage of it.
Okay.
Doug, can you hear okay?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, just double checking.
So that leads you then into what Charlie has sent us.
Okay, do we need a vote of the board to declare an emergency declaration?
I think that would be highly advisable that the board authorize its chairperson to execute a declaration.
So I need someone to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, I'll read it. Emergency declaration, whereas a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence or set of circumstances demanding immediate public action has arisen within the Town of Southwick, the incident is generally described as follows. Novid-19 pandemic and whereas the Director of the Town's Office of Emergency Management has determined that the aforementioned incident poses a present, reasonable, imminent danger to public health, safety, or general welfare of the people of Southwick or their property so that it has become necessary for the Director to utilize and coordinate the service, equipment, supplies, facilities of existing departments, offices, and agencies of the Town of Southwick for the purpose of civil defense, emergency management, and emergency functions. And whereas the Director has recommended that limited state of emergency be declared in the Town of Southwick and whereas the people of the Town of Southwick should be able to depend upon guidance from their Chief Executive Officer, I now therefore, I, Russell S. Fox, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Southwick hereby declare as of March 19th, 2020, a limited state of emergency exists in the Town of Southwick. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until notice is given. Pursuant to my judgment, that limited state of emergency no longer exists. All right.
Could you sign it?
I will sign it.
Date it, yep.
Date it. We'll make a copy of this and hand it to Mr. Dunlap tonight so that he can notify MEMA.
We'll leave copies of it, okay.
A copy of this, right.
Right. Because we'll want to give it to the appropriate, you know, the police and fire, Board of Health and public work so that they are aware of it.
Okay. All right. We're going to be meeting with Randy Brown. Since he's here, let's take Randy out of order.
Yeah, we can get him on his way.
Doug, we're meeting with Randy and we're going to be talking about Claus Anderson Road Culvert Design Scope Modification. Randy, go ahead.
So as you know, we're going through design efforts for the Claus Anderson Road Culvert project. As we were talking to some of the butters, there's some concerns from one of them in particular about potential impacts to his property, which is Downstream Mall Culvert. He's asked for some additional information, which would be in the form of modeling of the flows through the Culvert and through his property. He seemed pretty intent on getting that information, otherwise he may not work with us and we may need his cooperation moving forward. So what we've done is we did pass us through the MVP program. This is the grant we're getting through them. So they want to take, we're suggesting taking some funds from one of the tasks, which is the basically putting the construction documents together, taking that out of the scope and then reallocating those funds to this modeling effort to help appease the bar. So the thought was this is going to require several grants, you know, so we're, right now, the grant only covers the design efforts. The next application would be to cover, well, the construction, but then also this missing piece here from the design to cover that balance. So there's no change in overall cost or value to the contract, it's just reallocating funds that we can hopefully make up for in the next.
Next grant application.
Yeah.
Yep, understood.
So I need a motion to authorize the chair to sign?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. I'll sign that. All right, Randy, thank you very much. Is there anything else you needed to talk to us about?
Well, just Conglin Road.
It's on the agenda. The Conglin Road is on the agenda.
Oh, that mess. What do you want to talk about? How they want their goddamn money?
They want their money, yes.
Jesus Christ.
Moglen's printing the money right now and it's been.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
All right, why don't you, since we're recording the meeting, give us a background on where we're at?
So, you know, Conglin Road's been difficult and so we have this agreement with Mass DOT that states that if the overall project cost exceeded 110% of the value as of the bid price, based on the bid price, the town will be responsible to pay that overage. So they have, in my mind, they have not done a good job at tracking these costs throughout construction. And so now that construction is basically complete, as they're going through their numbers, they're seeing that the budget is way over, we're way over budget and that cost impact to the town, they told me verbally, could be in the range of $300,000. So, I mean, I've talked to Carl about this a little bit, you know.
We worked with council.
And we worked with Town Council. We did get a bill basically, which is the first of what I'm expecting to be many coming our way for just over $50,000. So this is a bill that DOT processed with a contractor and they basically said, given the Town of Southwick, okay, you're responsible to pay this bill. And they're going to continue doing that for, you know, until they go through all these project costs and basically zero out all the, so their project is complete.
And Randy, right now, Mark Bedlane is suggesting that we act on this first one at this point in time to approve it under a protest?
Yeah, he, so there are provisions in the contract where the contractors do payment within 30 days. And if he doesn't receive payment in the 30 days, then he could seek damages for late payments.
You ought to see how long that's going to take on our end. It took them two years to do a goddamn road, it would take four years to get damages from me.
Well, technically, his contract is not with us. His contract's with the Commonwealth.
Oh.
So if we were to.
Then I say school.
If we were to approve this, I want to have the check made out to the contractor and the Commonwealth because our agreement is with the Commonwealth. Then that way those two can figure out who's going to sign off and give the check to who.
Just, just for the record, Mark Bedlane was Town Council. All right.
So I agree, it's not.
And I know, it's not you, it's just.
And you have a copy of the bill, Randy?
I have a copy of the bill with me, yes.
Yeah, see, all you have is DOT's letter. Randy's got the actual.
Okay, all right.
What would you like to do with?
All the extra work that's not done over there, we're basically probably going to get bills for that too.
And where would you like to pay for it?
Unless that cost center isn't been taken up yet, right? Because they're not done, there's some neighbors that are still upset, there's some cosmetics that's still.
That's the punchless retaining.
There's punches things and some of those punchless items are going to be paid for in item, some of them are just part of the contract that the contractor has to do and.
Right, and provided he's not over on that line item, it won't come back to us. But if he's over on that line item and blah, 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 we're eating it. I just want to say that, for the goddamn record.
All right, so we have a recommendation from Town Council to pay the invoice.
Oh, yeah, that was right.
And that means we have to figure out where it's coming from.
Right.
We have a list of projects that we've worked out with the DPW Director. Do we want to just take a vote to authorize the payment to the Commonwealth and to the contractor tonight and then?
Figure out where.
Figure out from, with the CAO and the Randy and the chairman.
Because we have more Chapter 90 money that came in, right? Or is on its way?
Yeah, I mean, there's money in Chapter 90, we would have to apply for it.
Yeah, yeah, well, you guys figure it out.
You won't have time to do that, you'd be able to.
Right.
All right.
I mean, don't forget, it doesn't matter which basket, Randy, because he still has to bring other projects to you.
No, we know.
To give Chapter 90 approval for the remainder of this year and next year.
So I'm suggesting we pay the Commonwealth and the contractor in that the CAO, DPW Director and the chairman work out what pot it comes out of. Do you make that as a form of motion?
Yes.
Would there be a second on that?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right.
Anything else, Randy?
No.
That's probably enough, right?
How's it going on your end, overall?
Doing fine, doing fine. My only concern with the transportation, you know, we have a lot of.
That's why I was asking about the shields and the gloves, I wasn't sure if we can get them.
We do have protection for them and we tell them to keep a distance right now.
Yep.
But I do worry if, you know, things that we have to handle, you know, closer, more close than other things like brush, you know, like people drop off their brush, we take it, we handle it, you know, we may want to consider limiting some services like that.
Well, or establish a protocol, protocol of when they handle it. We know that it dissipates over X number of hours, so if there's a segregating, just like we tried to do.
You mean throwing the pile and let it sit there for a number of days each day?
Right, right, just like we did at the library.
Right, right.
You know, the recommendation from the Health Director was if your books are being returned, put them off to one side, don't touch them for so long and then after it's been so many days, then you'd be okay.
So is the brush going through the whacker, I mean, they?
Well, usually we try to brush it or we chip it as soon as we can.
I, I think you might want to.
Be a day behind.
But how many days with their pile? He's going to have one huge pile for this day and then they got a huge pile for this day and he's got to make sure nobody's throwing it in the pile that's about to be due to be chipped as opposed to the new recent pile.
Yeah, we had to do, put some signage up or something, I mean.
So he could work with Tammy on that.
Correct, absolutely.
Other things like, you know, bottles of cans.
You begin to know Tammy really well?
I know Tammy really, yeah. The bottles of, the wine's club, I know they come pick them up every couple of days, you know, I don't know if we're going to stop that practice, but I want to reach out to them and see if.
I think they're wearing gloves, which is good.
But if they're going to stop, you know, I think we can't continue, it's like, we can't just have that as an overflow for bottles and cans.
Yeah.
Oh, that's got to go right into recycling. Is he, either they pick it up on a regular basis to get rid of it from you or it goes right into recycling? Yeah, you can't be overflowing on that.
So things like that, I want, our vendors are reaching out and making sure they're still providing their service because if they stop their service, we're going to have a hard time accepting it.
Right, what do you do with it? You can't accept.
We can't stockpile it, yeah. So right now, no one's stopping services, but we are asking, you know, pretty much daily, you know, what their, what their plans are.
Yeah. I can check with the Lions tomorrow if you want me to.
I was going to call Krenke.
Oh, okay, okay.
He doesn't really handle that.
Paul, Paul and his group handles that. Paul was there picking it up today.
Oh, okay, well.
You know, or not today, yeah, Thursday.
He knows the exact.
Yesterday, right. So I could call Paul after this meeting just to, just to verify that they're going to continue doing that practice. Anything else, Randy, or you're all set?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to go knock off a couple of things. Acknowledge payroll warrant dated 3/17/2020 in amount of $226,856.99. PD dues warrant dated 3/17/2020 in the amount of $343. All right, we don't have any minutes for tonight, correct?
No, but I did receive from Sandra a series of draft sets of minutes that I'm proofing so that I hope to have those available for you at your next meeting along with, Robin will be preparing these ones.
Okay, the next thing I see here is city and town owner agreement, seven Rennie Avenue?
Right, we're going to withdraw that because that particular document that was listed that way and put on there is actually a, an assignment of proceeds and that was dropped off by the homeowner, but they were supposed to have mailed it to PVC, so we don't need to act on that.
Okay, the next thing is to authorize the chair and the CAO to hire any employees necessary below department head level because of this state of, limited state of emergency.
Right, and it's also very similar to what we already do now during summer hours.
Right, right, right.
It's very much the same thing.
So I need a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, next, authorize the chairperson to sign contract agreement with Fox and O'Neal, which we've already done. Let's see, authorize chair to sign Mass DOT, which you've already done.
Already authorized the chair to do that and you're going to work with myself, Randy, to determine the payment source account.
Correct, all right.
So then I have a hawkers and peders license in front of me for Fox Brothers, April 10th, 11th, and 12th, 2020. I need a motion to approve.
I still move.
Second, I'll second that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention, I work for Fox Brothers.
And if any other ones come in, you want to just make me in charge of those?
Please, please.
Okay.
All right, we're going to old business and dates to remember, LMC mission statement that's still being worked on?
Actually, Mr. Moglen and I have made substantial progress and Doug can outline in extensive detail for you.
Which won't be necessary during this meeting.
All right, okay.
We made some minor changes and corrections. Are we, are we going to accept it as is and send it back to them or are they going to, we sending it back to them, Carl?
I was envisioning that the board would just adopt it and send it to them because you'll notice that it does retitle itself, it's more of a mission statement than a charter.
Very good.
The town itself doesn't have a charter, right?
Correct.
All right, so we will be able to.
Have you guys reviewed it or if I'm willing to put forth a motion to send it back to the LMC?
If you're comfortable with it, Doug, I'm comfortable with it.
All right, if you want to make that motion, Doug?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. And thank you for all your hard work on that with the CAO. The remote participation program, I think we're kind of.
We're learning it.
Learning that right now during this, this emergency.
Right, and Doug has done some good research on rolling it out for the other boards and committees through this phone system that we're using right now.
Okay.
So we're getting there.
All right, special town meeting, Mr. Diddy, you've been working with the moderator?
Yeah, thanks for coming right along.
You will see that he has done his press release today and he's notified the public.
Yep.
And he's done Facebook and it's gone on the webpage and it's for next Monday evening. And obviously, if the inclement weather were to be more than what he's anticipating, then he would make the appropriate actions with other town officials to move it to another date certain.
Okay.
But as, as we stand right now, himself, Mr. Diddy, the Chief of Police evaluated the site and Mr. Putnam has been working with other relevant department heads that deal with the process. We've been making up copies of the special town meeting warrant, the warrant article explanations, Mr. Fox, that you conducted a public service announcement taping with Mr. Clark on Channel 15. That's in the posting that the moderator did, so he's referencing and referring people to that YouTube site for them to view it. So there's going to be maximum dissemination of opportunities of people to come up to speed on the warrant articles, both on Channel 15 and in the written form of the explanations.
Good.
Anything else to add on that, Vice Chairman Moglen?
No, I think it's an excellent idea to have it outdoors. Hopefully, it doesn't rain too hard, bring in an umbrella and hopefully it'll be fast and efficient and we can get out of there as quickly as possible.
Well said. All right, fire station project plans and specification?
Yes, I attended a meeting on Monday morning at the fire station with the design firm, Russo Bar, the fire chief, the building inspector, and as well as the finance committee's representative for Italian bond-related report projects, Mr. Pennell, and we went over the final issues relating to the specifications. We also had the town attorney conference in on that call, so the project manual book and specs were being finalized by Town Council. So since, let's see, today's Thursday, since that day, the prevailing wages sheets have been secured, the designer has submitted it to the Central Register for advertising, our office submitted it to the newspaper for advertising and the COMBIES requirement for advertising is going to be done tomorrow. So we're going to be looking at having planned releases within the next week or so. There'll be a pre-bid meeting, there'll be filed sub-trades coming in and then there'll be general bids coming in. What is going to be different about this situation, gentlemen, is the town signed up and registered through this new form called Bid Docs Online. It's a way where you can put your documents out, you don't have to go to a printer anymore, you don't have to do any of this, they do it all electronically. And if somebody wants a printed set, they'll sell them to them.
Right.
So we're not getting into the business of that anymore in large projects that are of this large scope.
Understood.
So for less than a thousand dollars for this whole project, we're all registered, they're going to deal with all those issues. They'll even take the bids in. They'll even take the bids in at the appropriate times, they'll tabulate them and they'll let you know within fifteen minutes what the bid results are.
Gotcha.
So this is, so we are taking advantage of a high-tech situation, which we would have done regardless of the virus here because of this new partnership with, with, that we have with this design firm. So, and it reflects everything that you wanted, it answered all your questions, it's got the snow things that, you know, to protect the falling snow, it addressed the stormwater issues, they're gonna be somewhat mitigated, so there's gonna be no stormwater additional issues, no digging, nothing. So John Goddard and DPW worked with them on that. So all of that is substantially moving, it's estimated at a million dollars, and we'll, we'll know sometime in April, as we're finalizing the warrant for the May town meeting, what we'll be looking at for, um, you know, actual bids coming in.
And I'll just get us a bid, it doesn't actually get us signed up to do the project.
No, we get you a bid in the door, right?
So if she is, so if she is the fan, we have a bid and that's fine?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and you'll have a certain number of days that you can delay it or award it and so forth, but this is what we all committed to do.
We did, and I'm not against it, one bit.
So I'm just letting you know, we're executing the plan.
I wanna know where we are on the road.
Executing the plan.
Right, you got it.
Does that fulfill your question?
Very good, excellent, thank you for all your hard work. Uh, Revere Road Layout Services scope?
Yep, Randy is in the process of securing a, uh, a design firm, um, for some estimates to bring to us for a individual standalone warrant article for town meeting, uh, that would be along the lines of what was done for Robin Road.
Correct.
Okay, next is the Oaken Cake liquor license violation here in disposition. Uh, we met, uh, at our last meeting, um, and we had a recommendation from, uh, Lieutenant Landis that, uh, how the owners had, uh, taken immediate action.
They did.
I thought they were very impressive and very honest and open with us, and, and the working with the, uh, police department. So I have no problem with, uh, accepting Lieutenant Landis's recommendation.
Yep, absolutely.
Is, can I have a motion to that?
So move.
Second that?
All in favor?
Do you wanna just sign that one, that you're gonna continue it, like?
Yep.
And just put who's motioning and who's?
Alright, so we have a motion made by Mr. Moglan, seconded by Mr. Didi.
J D.
A vote was taken and, uh, passed unanimous. Okay, uh.
Are we okay without having done signature on things?
We're not, there's, we're not signing any, what are we doing?
Okay, no, just, so.
On that, I can stamp, we stamp names on that all the time.
Okay, pass that down now.
Okay. Alright.
If we sign so much stuff that we don't even know we didn't sign.
That's what I was getting at, Doug, I just, I just thought, but I wanted you to feel like you're involved.
Always remember, always remember, Mr. Moglan, what counts is your vote, the rest of it are the execution and implementation steps.
Okay, next is, uh, open space facilities policies and signage, C P C application. Uh, they were going to have a meeting on the eighteenth, but it was canceled.
Right, they will be, they will be holding it again and they, um, they understand the need to do that. In fact, they were trying to identify potential leftover funds, um, already in the open space plan that I had been allotted by the committee last year, and I told them that until I saw all the bills were paid to Crowder Graphics and I was satisfied that the regional planning agency, who was tasked with the part of assembling the report, producing it, printing it, binding it, and until I got all of those types of issues, I would be reluctant to release the balance of those funds under the vote accorded my title and position to implement this project.
By the being.
Would the board be, uh, acceptable to submitting an application, coming up with a dollar amount and saying not to exceed?
I thought it was like, what, is seven, eight thousand or eight, ten thousand?
I, I would say like ten.
The signage, you know, your big money's gonna be your signage.
Signage, and development of the, uh, website.
Website.
Right, so if we said, uh, not to exceed ten thousand?
Okay.
Is that agreeable with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. B E A appreciation recognition reception is scheduled for April fifteenth, sixteenth at the, uh, um, regional school, I would imagine it's going to be canceled.
It's significantly postponed.
Right.
Yeah.
It'll depend upon, the, I, I, I'm under the impression that obviously, once you get into the first week in April, there'll be a decision about whether or not the, the, uh, closure will be revisited for a longer period of time or, um, quite frankly, through the end of the school year.
Well.
But that's out of our control.
It's out of our control, but based on.
Let's put, put us, we're all attending, put it down here, we're all going.
But based on what we see happening with higher ed.
We'll put it on hold till.
And what we see happening in other states, I, I think there's a good chance it's probably gonna be postponed.
So let's just put that on hold.
Uh, green energy program discussion, I think because of the situation, I think we're gonna postpone that too. Uh, the WIC three, three, eight permit and license agreement with the American Legion, I reached out to the promoter and began discussions with him, based on what, uh, this board, uh, told me to do. And, uh, Mr. Steinhardt is setting up a, a meeting with the American Legion post three, three, eight, so we can discuss the lease of, uh, town of Southwick land. So that's my update on that at this time.
Wonderful. Yeah, just, uh.
Is there any other old business that was not listed on the agenda?
Um, just other than the, um, the, um, at the last meeting, you authorized the deputy to do the, uh, the posting for the provisional, so that is starting to happen, the, we met with the union after that meeting.
Yep.
They concurred with it and were very receptive to it, and they have signed off on the, um, memorandum of agreement prepared by Attorney Dupre. So that will be coming tomorrow for the chairperson's signature.
Okay, and based on the pandemic that we're now dealing with and the loosening of.
You wanna make sure you keep your levels.
Of regulations.
You wanna keep your levels as, as staffed as much as possible.
Absolutely.
Because what's happening also that the, uh, the deputy mentioned to me was, even the people that are going through the process now, like the candidate you already hired, they're being slowed down because the agencies that do P A T tests, the agencies that do some of these other certifications, they're now on hold.
Yeah, everything is, yeah.
So this is going to be slowing down everybody's hiring processes in other communities that necessitate other state agencies, sign offs and involvements.
Well put, Carl, well put.
Okay, any other old business, Mr. Moglan?
Yes, sir, uh, uh, two things. First is, in regards to the remote participation, I've been working with Carl and Jim Middleton on a couple other alternative solutions to the one that we're using tonight, such that we could allow, um, at least public observation and or participation in a meeting. Obviously, this is a little cumbersome because public's not permitted to be at the meeting and they're only gonna hear what happened afterwards. But the, the way the current solution we have, it's the only way we can do it at this moment. So hopefully, within the next coming days, we'll have that, uh, an alternative solution on hand that we can make available to this board and other boards to be able to at least have the public observe and listen to, uh, meetings under the modified open meeting law. Um, and the second is that I've been working from home for the last week and, um, I, I have to say, catching some of the, the news broadcasts and so on, um, that the, at least on the state level, Governor Charlie Baker, Governor Palito and the H H S secretary have just been phenomenal with the level of communication and, and from at least where I sit, I have, I don't know if we're getting it all in yet locally, but the communications and the support, um, from, from the state house's executive branch has been extremely good.
Absolutely, I think. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Didi, any old business?
I'm good.
Okay, we're going to new business, any new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
I will be having, um, my L E P C meeting next week and that may involve, because it involves mostly town departments, that won't be an issue on our order for the building not to be accessed, so we may have other parties to that meeting, like Doug, um, set up to dial in.
Okay.
So that might be one of those things, Doug, where we try to do that expanded use of the, our phone system, um, remote participation approach. So that's gonna be happening.
Is that a statutory board under the open meeting law as well?
Yes, it is. So, but at the same time, as chairperson, I could cancel that meeting, um, and then as C A O, I could just conduct a meeting with the department heads, minus the other members that are not town, um, employees or town government people.
Do you think that might be the better?
Well, that was something I asked the, um, uh, my secretary, the council on aging director, to work with the health director to see if that's necessary, but I believe the health director actually wants these other people to be involved because it's part of her educating the public.
Okay.
So, and as we speak now, the health board is getting ready to have their remote meeting.
Alright, what were you gonna say, Doug?
I'll work with the C A O if there's additional resources that I can bring to bear, even from my, uh, other path to enable remote participation at that meeting.
Thank you very much.
That'd be greatly appreciated, if this is, you know, I tell you one thing, we're all getting an education on many different issues, when I look at all the different organizations, it doesn't matter whether you're in state government or local government, and what boards and committees and departments you're in, you look at all these different listserves and everybody is really trying to figure out the best remote participation approaches, the best, um, conferencing techniques, the high-end conferencing techniques with, um, the video capability. So you're gonna see a lot of, um, types of, of experiences come out of this and, and a lot of new tools that will just be there for the future.
Absolutely.
As they say, adversity sharpens the mind.
Nothing can replace the old gun, though, I can promise you that.
Or a pot's line.
There you go, alright, well, thank you, Doug. Any other new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, no, it's been a long week.
Mr. Moglan, new business?
I'm mildly concerned that you got this meeting done with forty-three minutes and Carl's there, so that means it's me.
I don't believe that is the case, Mr. Moglan.
I, I, I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm permitted to concur with that perception for the sake of my future.
Uh, Mr. Didi, any new business?
Changes every day, right, so we'll just, tomorrow's another day.
Alright, alright, our next meeting.
Mr. Fox?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, just two last things, just housekeeping, one is happy birthday to yourself and Mr. Steinhardt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
And also, we have to acknowledge, cause I'm sure some folks are gonna listen to this, acknowledge the yeoman work that, um, Mr. Putnam and the entire, and his whole cadre of folks that have pitched in to help him pull off, hopefully, this town meeting and, you know, Joe, I know you, and the chief of police and lieutenant and everyone else who gave him ideas and suggestions in a way to try to safely have this, uh, special next Monday. And it's gonna be something for the ages, I hope someone brings a camera to show everybody lined up in their parking spot for a special town meeting.
Well, I, I intend to have, uh, Dennis do the channel fifteen, um, you know, cable TV viewing, you know, taping.
I mean, I know this is our two-fiftieth and I think this will be something to watch at the three-hundredth.
Very good, alright, if there's no more new business, our next meeting?
Uh, is intended to be next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Cause you had asked me, the nineteenth, Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, and, uh, Thursday, the twenty-sixth. You could reevaluate, well, it'll be too late on, to not do it.
I think you leave them posted and we don't do, we don't do it, but at least if something comes up.
Yep.
We're ready.
We're ready.
Okay.
And we continue that way, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
I completely support that.
Yep.
Alright, then I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
And the time is six forty-six P M.